Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do it as right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Serowski.
Here.
Mrs. Kaski.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Vina.
Here.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kaski.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to begin by highlighting some very good work from our very own police chief. First, the city of Sterling Heights has been on the forefront, as most of you know, of substance abuse programming and has led the way in the state of Michigan with our opioid quick response team, creation of the Sterling Heights Drug-Free Coalition, and the Smart Moves Elementary School Anti-Drug Programming. Therefore, Chief Dwojekowski was nominated by the Michigan Association of Chief of Police to be a stakeholder on the governor's opioid Task Force Advisory Group this last year. This group is composed of medical professionals, substance abuse professionals, university researchers, and the like, and law enforcement leaders at the local, state, and federal level. The group's mission is to ensure a holistic approach to the opioid pandemic that has gripped this state and country for so many years now, including right here in Sterling Heights. The group makes decisions of state and federal spending, programming, and healthcare for people with substance abuse disorder. And in addition to that, in December of 2021, Chief Dwojekowski was nominated by the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police to represent all local police departments in Michigan as a steering committee member on the Michigan Alliance for Drug Endangered Children. The mission of the Michigan DEC Alliance is to reduce the harm experienced by youth and communities caused by caregiver and opioid substance misuse. So I really commend our chief for being a leader in this area and really a model for not only chiefs across the state, but for so many others working in this area that's of great need. So again, kudos to our police chief, Dale Dwojekowski. And moving on with my report, you may recall a few meetings ago, a couple residents expressed concern that they'd like to see our e-packet, which is provided online for every city council meeting, a little more user-friendly in terms of navigating. Typically, right now, when you download those packets or access them online from our website, they're in a PDF format. And depending on the version of PDF you have or the platform you're using the PDF document from, they're not always tabbed or bookmarked the way you might be accustomed to with other PDF documents. So we're working on that. And the good news is that we're going to be unveiling a new platform that much improves the organization of the e-packet. And you can navigate from one section to the other section very easily, no matter what version of PDF you have or no matter what platform you're using. So we hope to roll that out this spring. And of course, I'll highlight it when it's ready to go. But please know that that's forthcoming. And we certainly appreciate the feedback from residents who express some concern in that area. And I hate to end on this note, we all knew it was coming, but I wanted to give an update on the snow event that looks like it's surely going to hit us. And as some of you may know now, a snow emergency has been declared. It'll be effective tomorrow at 7:00 PM. And the reason for 7:00 PM is, according to the forecast, the snow will not be starting in earnest until tomorrow morning. It will be snowing throughout the day, but we wanted to make sure for those who do have to work tomorrow, when they get home, they're able to clear out their driveways. And that may require some minimal parking on the street while they're doing that, and then get their driveway, their car vehicles back off the street. So it takes effect tomorrow at 7:00 PM and will remain active until likely Monday. We'll see how it goes. So tomorrow and Thursday, snow removal operations will be focused on major roads. Late Thursday night, or early Friday morning, depending on how things go, DPW anticipates commencing snow removal operations in neighborhoods. So again, that's late Thursday, early Friday morning. As such, neighborhood roads are expected to be completed late Saturday or early Sunday. So with a heavy snowfall of a foot or more, it's going to take us 48 hours to get through the residential road. So that's the tentative plan now for snow removal. But we'll be out all day tomorrow. We'll have about 40 pieces of apparatus that will be out throughout the snow emergency continuously. On-street parking enforcement will commence in earnest Thursday morning and continue through Saturday and possibly Sunday, depending on how compliance goes. Any repeat offenders from the last year or the year prior will be ticketed and fined $100. And if it's a second offense, the fine is $125. I should say if it's a third offense, it's $125. So we want to remind everyone, and the good news is, we have great compliance, but we still have to issue four or 500 snow enforcement tickets every snow emergency. So we'd like to not have to issue any. So we do appreciate the overall good compliance. So in some cases, and especially with over a foot of snow, it's very possible we may have to tow some of those vehicles. If we can't get a plow down the street or an emergency apparatus like a fire engine, the city under a snow emergency can tow the vehicles without warning in those cases. So again, we encourage everyone to make sure their vehicles are off the road during the snow emergency. Sidewalk clearing will also commence. We remind everyone that after a snow event, once it stops, which is expected to be Friday, that you then have 24 hours to remove snow from your sidewalks. There'll be no refuse cancellations, I emphasize cancellations, but undoubtedly, there will likely be some delays in the hour of pickup. So please keep that in mind if you notice the trucks are running late. City Hall, Parks and Recreation Facilities, and the library will open tomorrow as scheduled. However, there'll be an early closing at 1:00. And that's in anticipation of what is likely to be treacherous road conditions. And we don't want to put employees and others in harm's way. So we'll have an early closure of our city facilities tomorrow. The recycling drop-off center will be closed Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And I wanted to remind everyone, those who are unable to clear your driveways or your sidewalks, and perhaps you don't have a contractor or don't want to enter into a contract with a firm, you can use the on-demand services. And I encourage you to go to our website to see, learn how to do that. It's a simple download of the app. Plows and Mose is one, Lawn Guru is another, but there are others out in the metro area as well. So it's as simple as using Uber or Lyft. Simply download the app, and you can make your request accordingly. And those who have not signed up for our listserv, and you're not getting our emergency notices or updates, we encourage you to go to our website and do that. But I am pleased to say that the notices provided this evening exceeded 100,000 people between our listserv folks, those that subscribe to our social media outlets, and also see Click Fix, our Sterling Heights TV viewing audience, and the like. So 100,000 people, a few years ago, you know, we just didn't have that capability. So it's pretty remarkable. That does not include the mass media. We send out press releases to Channel 7, all the major print outlets and so on. Their reach, as you well know, goes into the millions. But for us, right here in Sterling Heights proper, already over 100,000 people have been notified. So good luck to everyone. We appreciate your patience. I know it's going to go well in terms of our street removal because our DPW crews love this. They do an outstanding job. They're very proud of their work. And I think Sterling Heights stands out in these emergencies as going above and beyond to get the job done. And lastly, to conclude my report, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act for counsel to consult with the city attorney regarding two confidential written legal opinions. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda tonight is a presentation, and this is to adopt a resolution designating February 2022 as Black History Month. We have a presentation from Ayana Yet, the chairperson of the African-American Coalition. Ms. Yet.
Hello, and good evening, everyone. Apologize if we're going to be reading down or looking down for the most of this. Thank you so much, Mayor Taylor and City Council, for having me here tonight, presenting to you the resolution for Black History Month. I would like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we are meeting. I pay my respects to the Anishinaq-Biwaki tribe and the labor of my enslaved ancestors as we join today. So as mentioned earlier, my name is Ayana Yet, and I have the honor of serving as chair of the African-American Coalition. This coalition, as well as the citywide celebration of Black History Month, means so much to me as we work together to create change and promote belonging in this city. To celebrate Black History Month, especially in Sterling Heights, is so special to me, as is a step toward more visibility and inclusivity in this city. Growing up here, I experienced a great deal of discrimination and racism in my schools, my neighborhood, and my extracurricular activities. I felt invisible, along with other Black students that shared my feelings. Through these experiences, however, I learned the importance of allies and supporters that help change the narrative of hatred and promote love and acceptance within our communities. To have the recognition and ability to share my history and bring honor to my ancestors and elders, contributions and memories for all of February, and hopefully all year round, with my city and community are invaluable. And with that said, I am so happy to be able to present this resolution to you all this evening. Since 1976, Black History Month is annually observed in February. Historically, Black History Month is conceived in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson, noted Black scholar, son of former slaves, and founder of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. Black History Month recognizes and celebrates the many historical achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to the society and culture of the United States. African-American achievements and contributions in the arts, civil rights, education, entertainment, government, history, law, literature, medicine, technology, and the military have profoundly shaped and enhanced the development of the United States. The theme for 2022 Black History Month is Black Health and Wellness. And it takes a look at how American healthcare has often, excuse me, underserved the African-American community. The city of Sterling Heights continues to work toward its vision of an inclusive community where all citizens are welcomed, accepted, respected, and safe. In line with that vision, it is fitting and proper to give local recognition to and honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in this community throughout this state and nation. To that end, local programming celebrating Black History Month is planned for February 2022, including February 12th at 2:00 PM, preschool and up, A World of Music and Stories with Ms. Audrey, which features music from around the world, including steel drums, kalimba, kuika, and berimbau, along with storytelling specifically curated for Black History Month. February 17th at 7:00 PM features In Our Own Voice, African-American art webinar, which is a creative contribution of African-Americans from the 19th century through present day. This is offered through the DIAs Behind the Scenes series. February 19th at 6:00 PM is the McComb Celebration of Black Excellence Award Gala, which the city's African-American Coalition is sponsoring this annual event, where community leaders experience a cultural immersion and celebrate six honorees. February 23rd at 6:00 PM, there will be a screening of Double Victory: The Tuskegee Airmen at War. This screening of this documentary tells the story of the Tuskegee Airmen, the first African-American pilots in the United States military who served during World War II. And all month long, the library book club will feature books from Black authors. The senior book club will be reading It Is Not All Downhill From Here by Terry McMillan on February 2nd, and books on tap will be reading Fifty Words for Rain by Ashle Lemmy. There will also be more storytimes and more. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. And you know what? I'm going to meet you down there, so stay right there. We do have a copy of the resolution, so you want to take a picture?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and that's for you.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate you.
Counsel, we do have a suggested action.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to designate February 2022 as Black History Month. The city of Sterling Heights call upon residents, businesses, and community organizations to learn about and appreciate the abundant and impactful historical contributions of African-Americans to the success of the United States and Sterling Heights.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Radke?
I guess I'll go very briefly. I'm so happy to sponsor this resolution. These are always great because they urge the community to really learn about their neighbors. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, counsel, anyone else? Well, thank you very much, Ms. Yet, for being here and presenting that to us. We appreciate it, and we appreciate the great work that the African-American Coalition is doing. I know I speak on behalf of my entire council colleagues here. When we say if there's anything more we can do to support your mission, please let us know. We are paying very close attention to the work you're doing, and we want to hear feedback. We want to know what we, as the city's leaders, can do to better serve every member of our community. So this is vitally important work. We celebrate Black History Month here in the city of Sterling Heights. I'm proud that we're taking a more active role in this than we have in years past, and we're programming it and providing opportunities for people across the community to come out and celebrate Black History Month. We have thousands and thousands of Black residents in Sterling Heights, and we thank them for their contributions to our city, thank them for their contributions to making Sterling Heights a great place to live, work, and play. And we will continue to be committed to this very important goal. So thank you again. Ms. Yet, and counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is another presentation, and this is to adopt a resolution recognizing and congratulating the Sarisane Slovak Folk Ensemble on the milestone of its 50th anniversary. We have a presentation from Ms. Carmen Williams from our Ethnic Community Committee. Ms. Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to the city council, and to the city manager, and to the city attorney. I am Carmen Williams. I am a member of the Ethnic Community Committee, and I thank you all for this opportunity to present this outstanding resolution for the folk ensemble. A resolution of the Sterling Heights City Council recognizing and congratulating the Sarisane Slovak Folk Ensemble on the milestone of their 50th anniversary. The Sarisane Slovak Folk Ensemble of Sterling Heights, Michigan, was founded in 1971 by Milan Straka and continues under his direction today. The group is based at St. Syrah and Mathias Catholic Church in Sterling Heights. The ensemble has traveled throughout the United States, Canada, and Europe, and has performed at various ethnic festivals, cultural events, charity benefits, and fraternal events throughout Metro Detroit. The group has traveled to and tours Slovakia a number of times to perform in various cities, at times with their sister group, Sarisane of Slovakia. The Sarisane Slovak Folk Ensemble's dances are lively and spirited, and have brought the group much acclaim. The ensemble promotes Slovak culture through dance from many different regions of Slovakia, and has performed at the Sterling Heights Cultural Exchange for many years. The ensemble has performed for President Ronald Reagan and with the Michigan Opera Theater. They have previously been honored by the city of Sterling Heights, the city of Detroit, the state of Michigan, the city of Velkisaurus in Slovakia, and the Slovak Ambassador. Now, the city of Sterling Heights would like to congratulate the Sarisane Slovak Folk Ensemble on their 50th anniversary and recognize their ongoing efforts to promote Slovak folklore and cultural diversity in Sterling Heights and throughout the country and the world. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Sterling Heights does hereby recognize and congratulate the Sarisane Slovak Folk Ensemble on their milestone of their 50th anniversary. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sterling Heights to be affixed this first day of February 2022. It is presented by the city clerk, Melanie Ryska, for the great city of Sterling Heights. Please help me welcome Mr. and Mrs. Weeche to accept this resolution.
You're welcome. Thank you, Carmen, and good evening to everybody. My name is Sue Weeche. Our director, Milan Straka, could not be with us tonight, so I'm here on his behalf. I'm a former member of the group, having danced for 30 years, but at this point, my dancing boots have been retired. When Milan came to this country in 1969, he had already been performing in a group in Slovakia. He loved his folk dance, and he missed it. So in 1971, he decided to form a group. It just started with two couples, you know, very small. Little did he know, 50 years later, the group would still be here and still thriving, and sharing our Slovak culture with many audiences, as she said. You know, the group has gone across to Slovakia, to Italy, to England, throughout the U.S. and Canada. I loved it. It was a great chance, I'm Slovak, it was a great chance to show my culture, you know, bringing that ethnicity to everybody, to people who haven't seen it. It's great. We appreciate the recognition. Like she mentioned, we have performed at the Cultural Exchange many times, and we're happy that the city has recognized us. I mean, our city is a very culturally diverse city, so it's great to receive this recognition, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sir, anything to add?
No.
He's my support guy.
Absolutely. You got him.
Thank you. Thank you.
You want me in it, Paul? That's okay. I don't want to ruin it for you. All right, counsel, we have a suggested action.
Mayor Taylor. Mayor Taylor.
Yeah, Mrs. Serowski.
Thank you. Resolve to adopt the resolution recognizing and congratulating the Sarisane Slovak Folk Ensemble on the milestone of its 50th anniversary.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Just very briefly, as a woman whose last name is Serowski, I do appreciate and love the Slovak dance. And although I am not, I'm Irish by heritage, I am Polish by marriage, and love everything about it. The costumes, the lively dances, as Carmen said, it's wonderful. And we thank you for your being with, sharing your talents with our city. So thank you very much.
Counsel, anyone else? Well, just very briefly, thank you for being here tonight to accept this, and thank you for 50 years of adding to the rich cultural diversity of our city, and for all that you've done, spreading your cultural heritage and doing it in a fun and exciting way. We thank you for that, and thank you for being a part of this community. Wish you well and hope for another 50 years of Slovak dance right here in Sterling Heights. So thank you very much. One more big round of applause. Counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you again. That will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kaski.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a consideration item, and this is to consider an appointment to the city of Sterling Heights Ethnic Community Committee. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, this is a mayoral appointment to a term on the Ethnic Community Committee. I would like two more weeks in order to make a decision on this appointment. So the next city council meet would be February 15th, so I'd entertain a motion to postpone this item to the February 15th, 2022 council meeting.
It's been moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak under communications from citizens? Mr. Nelson.
Good evening. Ken Nelson, 40862 Fire Seal Drive. I'm here tonight to congratulate the mayor. He did a really good job of getting people perturbed with the introduction of an ordinance that was repealed, because it had to be. Well, people that started that started yet another one. So as of right now, there is a petition being circulated that will be in the Melanie 45 days after you guys put this all together. At that time, you said it's going to be super hard, and you don't care if people freeze their butts off going out and getting signatures. Okay, that didn't set real well with almost 8,000 people. So it's being circulated. I suppo- I support this fully. I was in opposition. This thing was put together quickly, and should have been, should have been a lot of changes made from one to the other. So just want to thank the people that put this together, and we will be seeing everybody there. If anybody wants to sign this petition, they can get in touch with me at 586-419-0701, or I'll get you to the person that's organizing this, and they'll be glad to get you some copies of this to send around. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Not, we'll close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Mr. Kachubski.
Yes, Mayor, we have two items for closed session.
Okay. Counsel, any reports or new business?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Okay. I just, this is through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. I received two phone calls today about a business license fee, and I know that we passed an ordinance a couple of years ago that this fee would go into effect. But if we could just explain it to the business owners, what this means, and especially the nonprofits. And I guess my other question, are places of worship considered a nonprofit that would have to register as a business?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, yes, I'd be happy to provide an update on this. Little over a year ago, the city council approved an updated business licensing ordinance. What we had prior to that was a business registration process, and it didn't encompass all the businesses in Sterling Heights. So this ordinance was more encompassing, is really centered on public safety. So what we require now is that all businesses, regardless of their corporation status, so that would include not-for-profits and any other business in the city, that they go through an annual online, highly automated business licensing renewal process. And so we want to make sure that we have updated contact information for all the businesses, especially property managers throughout the city. And you could imagine, if there ever is an emergency of any type, it might be related to a fire emergency, it might be related to a water main break in the area, it could be related to a whole host of issues where we need to contact the property managers and the like. We now have readily available information in both police, fire, and DPW to do that. In addition, we want to make sure that we have a good handle on the 3,000-plus businesses that exist in the city. And we want to work hand in hand with them to make sure that we're doing all that we can as a city to promote either their product, their services, or their cause in general. And our goal is to list all of our businesses on the website with links, if the businesses find that appropriate, and to provide them greater exposure, if you will. Of course, that would be voluntary. There are some businesses that might not like that exposure in the city, but we want to be able to do that. So this has been a longstanding effort in the city. We're glad that we're finally able to get it done. The feedback has been very positive from those that have gone through the process to renew online. We really haven't received many complaints at all, and I'm hoping with this round, I should also add that the first year, the fee was waived by the city council because we were in the pandemic environment, and you all thought it was an appropriate thing to do, and I certainly agree. This will be the first round where the $60 fee will be in play. But again, we think the value-added service that's provided, especially in the name of public safety, from this process is well worth the fee. So we really haven't had many complaints. I hope that helps.
It does. And then just to follow up, how were the businesses originally notified? Was that through email, or was it through a letter? The other question would be, is do they have the ability to pay this fee online? And then, as far as the directory of all the businesses and how they would be categorized, is that something that's going to be online directory, or will that be a hard copy?
Mr. Vanderpool. Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, all good questions. First of all, we had to hire a number of part-time employees who spent months canvassing the city, literally going from business to business, knocking on doors and making sure we had a complete database of businesses. With 3,000-plus businesses, you can imagine, it's hard to know exactly who they are, where they are, and what exactly their business is about. So that process went very smooth. We got the database developed, and then we notified all of them of this process. We explained when it would be going online. And now, once we've gone through the first round of this, we now have emails we can communicate electronically, so it's far more efficient. In regard to the actual exposure and marketing the businesses, we still have yet to define exactly how we're going to do that. We need a little more engagement with the businesses and collaboration. But now that we have the data and it's highly automated, we can sort those businesses based on the types of businesses, whether it's a restaurant, or whether it's a dealership and the like, you know. So being highly automated, that's not a problem at all. But we do need to work with them and collaborate, and also engage the Chamber of Commerce as well, because there may be some value-added service there to have the chamber involved also.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Radke. Thank you. I, just because it was brought up, the business licensing fee is an unmitigated money grab by the city and should be repealed. That's why I voted against it when we introduced it, and I still oppose it today.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Just briefly, I have to say I was kind of touched. I saw a few posts on the Sterling Heights, various Sterling Heights Facebook pages tonight that members of our community are actually offering a parking spot in their driveways for people that may have more cars than they can fit on their driveway for the snow emergency. I think it just shows that, you know, we live in an amazing and very giving and welcoming community, and, you know, let's just think about each other, and those cars parked in the street is not only a safety issue, it's a courtesy issue to your neighbors as well. So the more cars we can get off the street, the easier DPW can get in there and clean the streets, and the fire and police have access to it, and your neighbors have access, because we all know, you know, if you have a neighbor parked, you know, in front of their house, which is next to yours, you get an abundance of snow left by your driveway. So it's a courtesy to everyone, and safety. And if you do have space in your driveway, maybe think about that neighbor that may need just to borrow it to get their driveway cleared out. So I think we live in a great, awesome community, and that's all I have.
I agree. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So just very briefly, and to kind of piggyback on the snowmageddon, as I'm calling it at work, because I have staff always driving, please be careful out there tomorrow and Thursday to all of our residents. I have my nurses and my therapists out every day, still going to see patients, and they're going to be going out on the road, so be careful and be cautious. And if you see anyone that needs help, please help them. I really do, I agree with Mrs. Schmidt, that we are a caring, and good, and open, and very concerned community. So I'm just going to end on one thing, and I do think that this is a great place to make change and promote belonging. And so I want to just always say that in my city, hate has no place here. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Back to this registration of businesses. The businesses that would be required to register, are they just the ones that have a location, a shop, or would this also include people that have business at home?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Kosky, the last part of your question, could you repeat, please?
Someone that would have a business at home? They're running their business at home?
That's a very good question that I'm going to defer to the city clerk on.
Ms. Riska.
Yeah, this is only for brick and mortar businesses. We do not license home businesses.
Just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that, that if they have a business that they're running out of their home, they don't have to register. Thank you.
Anything else? Counsel? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call?
Mrs. Kosky.
Yes.
Mr. Radke. Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sarowski.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor. Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero. We will adjourn into closed session. We will not be returning. So thank you all for coming out, participating. Happy first day of Black History Month, and go Stafford, go Rams! In two weeks.
Amen.